I'm going to hold the science guy in contempt. Do we have a jail in the basement? My name is Paul Schlichtman. I am the secretary of the school committee. In the absence of a chair, in the absence of a vice chair, you get the third-string quarterback. So I am calling this meeting to order, and we can tell now that I'm universally ignored anyway. It is 6:30 PM on Thursday, May 9th. If it isn't May 9th, you're watching a rerun. We begin with the peer-school artwork, which is around the room. And we'll start with bulletin board A, where we have first-grade mixed-media favorite food art. First-grade students started this project by learning about the primary and secondary colors and paper weaving with them. We then looked at famous works of art by artists who were inspired by food such as Wayne Theobod, Andy Warhol, and Class Oldenburg. Students then created prints of drawings they created of their favorite meals. First graders finished this project by collaging their favorite food prints into a dinner-table scene. Also on bulletin board A is the fifth-grade dessert-watercolor paintings. So we've got a food theme over there. For inspiration, before we began this project, fifth-grade students learned the elegant and colorful yet simple paintings of American artist Wayne Theobod. Theobod is known for his still-life paintings of desserts and other delicious foods. Fifth graders also created their own desserts, still-lives, by using toy cupcakes as a reference. Students thought about the placement of their drawing on the paper, and which point of view would they draw their cupcake from? Would they draw a bird's-eye view, a side view? Would they crop the cupcake and only draw one side of it? Then they used liquid watercolors to add saturated, bright color to their drawings. Students finished the project by making a border for their still life containing an illustration of their favorite desserts and sweet treats. Doesn't sound like they ate any cooked cupcakes, however. B, the kindergarten, not a stick-imaginative drawings. To begin this project, kindergarteners read the story "Not a Stick" by Antoinette Portis. The story tells of a pig who uses his imagination to transform a stick into many different tools so that he can have fun adventures. We then talked about using your imagination and how it can help you really push your creativity to its limits in your art. Kindergarteners then thought creatively to turn a popsicle stick into an exciting scene with the help of markers. Popsicle sticks then became butterflies, sleds, flags, and other objects in fun imaginative drawings. Now we move to bulletin board C, back there. Takashi Murakami-inspired color wheels. To begin this project, fourth-grade students learned about the colorful art by Takashi Murakami. Takashi Murakami is a Japanese artist known for blurring the line between fine art and commercial art. Many consider him to be one of the most innovative artists working today. His style is compared to the pop art of Andy Warhol. One of the most familiar images in Murakami's art is a smiley-faced flower. Inspired by Takashi Murakami, grade-four students created their own flower with an expression of their own creation. We then discussed color theory and the color wheel. Students learned how to mix colors and painted their flowers in color-wheel order. Now, back to -- there's no text for D, so we're back to E, starting with the second grade. Elizabeth Murray-inspired shape sculptures. Elizabeth Murray is a famous painter who is well-known for her uniquely shaped canvases that blur the line between 2D and 3D art. Using Murray's artwork for inspiration, second graders cut out organic and geometric shapes from cardboard and created their own unique composition. Then students use their knowledge of primary and secondary colors to mix a variety of shades to brighten up their shape sculptures. And finally, we have the third-grade textured jelly prints. For this project, third graders learned about positive and negative space. Positive space is the area of work of art; that the subjects are areas of interest. Negative space is area around the subjects or areas of interest. Grade-three students then placed a variety of found objects on jelly plates. When ink is added to the plate, it leaves a mark on a paper pressed against it. When the objects are peeled off the paint, you can press a new paper onto it, and it makes a different print. Third graders had fun with experimenting with color and layers on their prints in order to create an abstract and unique work of art. And therein lies the artwork for the day. Excuse me. Next on the agenda, public comment. Seeing no public to comment, we move on to item agenda number three. There are two resolutions before us. As I mentioned at the last meeting, there are a couple of resolutions that we could potentially talk about. The first one was referred to us by two members of the Somerville School Committee. There's a written explanation of why we might want to consider it and what the thinking is. The first resolution is to hold harmless 2019 10th-grade MCAS students due to the racially troubling question. And the "therefore be it resolved" line is the Arlington School Committee calls on DESI to exempt students who took the spring 2019 10th-grade ELA-MCAS with a rejected question from the graduation exam requirement in English-language arts, and that a copy of this resolution be delivered to the Commissioner of Education, Board of Elementary and Secondary Education, the governor, the Arlington Legislative Delegation, the Massachusetts Association of School Committees, and otherwise widely distributed. Any comments or thoughts? Dr. Seuss.
I just -- I have some questions and some comments. So I'm looking at you. So the question -- the issue before us is whether we want to adopt the Somerville resolution, obviously changing it to Arlington rather than Somerville.
Right. Revising the language a little bit from what they had, which was distributed at the last meeting, making it a little more Arlington-centric.
So the question I have, and I just don't have the background to know, is this issue about whether they should release old questions? And I just, you know, I can understand why they might not want to, and I can understand why we would want to see them. And I just don't have enough information to know whether -- what's appropriate in this situation.
Well, right now, they release all the 10th-grade questions. But as a matter of course, they do not release all the ones that are actually scored in 10th grade. They do not release all the questions in grades K through eight because they do want to reuse them. So there's an expense involved.
Okay. So what?
But because this one counts towards -- it's a high stakes is the reason why they do release that. Go ahead.
Well, because it says it calls for them to immediately implement a policy of releasing old MCAS questions. And so you're saying that they already do that?
Um...
So that's -- I just have questions. I don't have enough background to know what's appropriate in this kind of situation.
Well, the "therefore be it resolved" is the only part that we're resolving to. And that in our resolution, we don't have the -- do you have our current one here?
It's at the bottom of his thing.
Yeah.
Oh.
Under the "now therefore be it resolved," one of the issues here was that
Under the document.
Students could not talk about the question until it was released from embargo. And this is very controversial, so people were tripping on the rules. But releasing the questions not in our "therefore be it resolved." So, yeah. Mr. Hayner.
One of the issues that I've always had with MCAS, when MCAS started, after the test was over, the teachers would get together and discuss the test. There were questions that weren't either worded well and stuff. We would communicate back to the state and things of that nature. For some reason, they stopped that to the point that I was subbing once, and I didn't know about the restrictions any longer, and I talked to the principal about an MCAS question that I saw that I had a question about. He almost had a heart attack because I had violated the rules and stuff. I think this is an example of not being able to evaluate immediately what's going on and allowing a controversy. I'm not saying that it isn't justified, but it might have been resolved fairly quickly going forward. I'm in support of the resolution.
Is that -- does that mean you're making a motion to adopt it?
So move.
Second.
Okay. Move by Mr. Hayner, second by Dr. Allison Appi. Any further discussion? Yes, Dr. Allison Appi.
I'm also in favor of this motion. I know it doesn't bring up the question that I brought up last time, that there was also apparently a test question, which was kind of similar style but a different topic. I'm not sure it makes sense to add it in here. I'm just bringing it up partly so that parents at home know that we understood there was concerns. I think that this -- the resolution and this question will prompt DESI and whoever else to take a better look at questions, and would have scooped up this other question also.
Okay. Somebody's microphone's not pointed at somebody.
Sorry. Okay. Okay.
Okay. We're being coached by our...
Oh, okay. I thought -- but my mic is here. Okay. Anyway, so...
The point that I think is being made here is that a kid who is traumatized by this question may not be able to test well through the rest of the test, so that their scores may be adversely affected. And I don't think that it's appropriate to force a child who doesn't attain a passing score in a test that's psychometrically changed because you've omitted a large portion of it to require them to take the test again. So I think that that's really the heart and soul of what we're saying in this point. Mr. Hayner.
Do we know a situation like this? The resolution of this problem, has it happened before where a section of the test has been nullified and a student was allowed to graduate without that requirement being met?
No, not here. I mean, there have been cases in other states, but not in Massachusetts. Mr. Thielman.
So my question is, the Arlington School Committee calls on DESI to exempt students who took, should we say, who took and did not pass?
Well, blanket exemption on it. So, I mean, obviously, the kids who passed it wouldn't need it. I'm just mirroring the Somerville language, but you're really in the same place. Mr. Hayner.
I think that this should be pushed for no other reason than to keep the MCAS organization accountable for the quality of the product that we're paying considerable amount of money for. But it's not evaluating what is intended to be evaluated, rather causing consternation in students and having a negative effect. That's not the intent, and that's not -- we need to hold them accountable, and I think this is a way to hold them accountable.
Okay. Dr. Seuss.
So I'm in favor of this resolution. My earlier question was about the Somerville one. I didn't realize it wasn't in here. But I do have one more question. So what I understand is that not all students had the same questions, right? And so this only applies to some students?
No. This -- from my understanding, this is a common question. But as soon as it got to the attention, they pulled the question. So if you took the test after a certain point, the question didn't appear.
Okay. Because I mean, one of the concerns that people have is, you know, for any reason. I mean, forget about the trauma. If you take away part of a test and you grade now everything on the remaining question, it doesn't seem to be fair compared to somebody who had it. Right? So, yeah, I'm in favor of this. I mean, they won't be happy with it, but they shouldn't have screwed up.
I also want to point out one other thing is that Commissioner Riley was very proactive in pulling the question right away and owned up to it. There's really no cover-up on this, and I think that there is goodwill from the commissioner in this case. Mr. Hayner.
But I think your point that although pulling the question and not counting that question, if it had, and nobody knows how much of a negative effect it had on the student going forward that did take it. So I think the -- again.
Okay. Hearing, seeing no other hands, I'll call for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That's unanimous vote. Five, nothing. One, two, three, four, yeah, five. Okay. I mean, I'm out of practice, you know, third-string chair. Second one comes as a result of my being a member of the Assistance and Accountability Advisory Council. And there was a discussion of the challenge that we have to attract minority educators. And that one of the problems that were identified really held out was the licensure requirements in Massachusetts is a considerable barrier because if you have qualified candidates from out of state, and because we're -- we have a significant Caucasian population in Massachusetts, in order to increase our diversity, we do need to find people from out of state who want to come to Massachusetts to work. And it's a wonderful place, except until you find that there are all these bizarre licensure requirements, including the MTELs, which flat-out discourages people from coming to Massachusetts to attain licensure when they can go and get a license elsewhere in another, almost as nice state and work pretty readily. And this conversation was brought up by DESI people as being one of the things that they were looking at. And the whole process of testing is a barrier that really doesn't provide any information. And since testing was instituted by John Silber back in the '90s, there's really been no empirical evidence that testing helps to identify or screens out unqualified candidates. We're pretty good at hiring people around here, and we were -- many districts ask people to sit at a computer and do a writing sample so we can check for literacy. And now on top of that, we have a prescriptive staff evaluation system that requires us to report findings on teachers, including that first 90-day period, which is in our discretionary time to say goodbye if we feel we need to. So we've got an unnecessary test that's a barrier, and it's also tied to the fact that the people who govern licensure in Massachusetts have nothing to do with the license. It is the only profession or trade in the Commonwealth where the person who holds the license is ineligible to have a say on their own professional standing. So as strange as it may seem at first look, the fact that educators have no say in their license and the fact that they have this bizarre John Silber test is a barrier to licensure are very much related. And to bring this forward, I would ask the committee to forward this with our approval to the Mass Association of School Committees for consideration in the delegate assembly in November. Mr. Hayner.
As a former educator, a school committee member, I support this wholeheartedly. You said every single thing that I'd want to say on it. It is just ridiculous to have people creating the license that have not worn the shoes, that have not been there on a daily basis. I think you also stated that first 90 days, the person that has been hired is a person-at-will employee, and we -- the principal or the superintendent can say thank you and go home. We have a phenomenal -- and the state is to be credited with it, and a great staff of administrators dealing with evaluation, improving people, and supporting them. We have a phenomenal mentoring system in this system. I have personally experienced it this past year, working with teachers, and seeing how excited they are with the mentoring that's going on. And this is just an impediment. I agree wholeheartedly.
Are you moving the resolution?
I so move it.
Second.
Okay. Motion by Mr. Hayner, second by Dr. Seuss. Any other comments?
I just want to ask...
Yes, Mr. Thielman.
What do you -- have you guys thought about this at all, the elimination of the MTEL?
Have we as a...
Yeah.
Can you give it?
You got to put the mic down.
We have not discussed it as a -- since I've been here as an administration. But it's something that, you know, through my doctoral work, which did focus on recruiting, hiring, staff of color, it did come up as a barrier. And that is culturally biased to provide this type of test. And it does not measure someone's ability to be a good teacher. So, yes, it did came up, and there's lots of research that identifies various barriers that prevent people, all people, but especially people of color, from joining the profession.
Got it. Okay. Thank you. Thanks. Any other discussion or comments? Dr. Seuss.
Just that I'm not generally in favor of arbitrary barriers to entry into a profession, and this sounds like one. I think our superintendents, our principals are adept at hiring and evaluating competency. So, yeah, I'm in favor of this.
Mr. Hayner.
Just for clarification, we pass this -- does this -- are we individuals going to be sending this, or is the school department going to send it for us?
I will send it as the board secretary to MASC and inform them that we passed this resolution and submitted. I'll also put it on the MASC less served. Because if five committees endorse this, it automatically goes on the agenda. Otherwise, it needs approval of the board of directors, which I don't think would be a problem. I think they'd be happy to see this.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, ready for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous vote. Okay. Thank you. Science New Standards Curriculum Update, L. Weathers. Larry?
Hi.
Welcome. It's good to see you. Look at the beautiful flower you brought us.
It's a prop.
It's a prop.
You'll see it in the PowerPoint in a minute.
You always do a proper presentation.
I do. I do. Science is about the physical world and how it works. And we have to have things, things to look at and observe and make interpretations about. So I always have to have the props. So we'll pull up a PowerPoint here in a second, and Karen, will you advance it? Oh, I'm sorry. I have that.
No, this is not it yet.
It starts with three levels.
So let me just begin. You know, at all levels of the science program in the Arlington Public Schools, kindergarten through grade 12, we have the same goal, and that is to produce students who know how to think scientifically and to know how and what is meant by the scientific practices. Those are the fundamental core things that we try to do at every class, every grade, every course. So we spin off of that, of course, and we look at the strengths of the kids at all of those different levels and what, you know, kids, the elementary kids are just so curious. They can be curious about anything, you know? A crack on a sidewalk, a bug walking here or there. And we want to make sure we don't stifle that. Their activities should be playful and curious, and we should have a hard time distinguishing between study of science and play. It should be that kind of curiosity. So I figured that if President Trump can have the State of the Union, I should have the State of the Science Department. So this will just go through some of that very succinctly, I hope, some of the accomplishments of the year and what we hope to be our next steps. Oh, I'm sorry. So what do I do here?
Forward.
Try it. Power down.
This doesn't have a down arrow.
Ask Mr. Good.
Red.
How wonderful Mr. Good is here.
Yeah, Mr. Technology here, you know?
Or how good it is that Mr. Wonderful is here.
As long as he can make it work.
Yes. Okay. See?
Yeah.
There you go. This button right there will fold.
Which one?
Okay. Thank you. Okay. So when we talk about the practices, I just wanted to list them again. You know, these are what we used to call inquiry skills. And now they've refined the term. It's called -- they're called practices because practices involve what scientists do. We are practicing being scientists. And so these are all skill-based things that you need to have stuff to look at, to ask questions about, to comment on, to analyze, and to engage in arguments about. So I'd like you to just kind of notice the shape of the petals here. We're going to look at some things about this in a little bit. So, and I'm sorry, I don't know, is there a brightness, Karen?
No.
No.
Okay. So part of what we, of course, want to be attentive to is our kids have these -- they're not high stakes in fifth grade, but there's still important tests, the MCAS, and they lead kids toward a high-stakes test. And so this is an example of -- oh, I'm sorry. This is an example of our Common Assessments that we have under development. And what I want -- I might need to grab my version of this so that I can read the points more quickly. Sorry. Can you read all of those?
Sure.
Yeah, we have our electronic stuff.
Would it help to set off another light?
The question's whether people at home can see it.
Oh, maybe that's part of what it is.
Turn them all off.
Turn them off, Karen.
Turn them what?
Yeah, turn the other set of lights off.
Okay.
There we go.
Yeah, that's better. Okay. So this is the beginning of one of our Common Assessments. One of the question examples is a group of students who were arguing about what holds the Earth in orbit around the moon or the Sun. And when it -- what is the best explanation that could be supported by evidence? So we see this in the MCAS questions. This, you know, don't just repeat back a fact to me. Tell me what you think is based on evidence. And so this is a -- we're trying to get at this so the kids have practice with this. Here is an actual question from the MCAS, a fifth-grade MCAS. This one addresses the practice of engaging in argument from evidence. Student A learned about the motions and brightness of the sun, moon, and stars. Student B said they're different because they're different brightnesses, because they each give off different amounts of light. Write an argument that student A can make to either support or challenge student B. That's no trivial matter at grade five. Write an argument that student A can make. Okay? It involves writing. It involves interpretation. It involves content knowledge, you know? So this is what our kids are aiming at. And that's why we're trying to give Common Assessments that parallel some of these. Another one. This is about a practice that involves forming conclusions. So you take a tuning fork, touch it to a cork, the cork moves after you struck the tuning fork. Okay? So they're asking, which of the following conclusions can be made from this investigation? The observation of a moving cork. Okay? And so it's, again, it's an interpretive question. It's not repeating back a fact. This year, we have been meeting with FOSS specialists to introduce and interpret the scientific practices several -- that we had meetings several times. Remember that many of our elementary school teachers are not native science-trained. Many of them are -- have -- were English majors. There are some that are math and a few that are science. But to talk about the practices, they're not as familiar with that terminology, so we're trying to make them familiar with it. And we also met with some FOSS specialists to plan and draft several versions of Common Assessments that involve the kinds of wording that I showed you a little while ago. Next steps, we want to illustrate content crosswalk. So one of the elementary teachers asked the question, do we know that all the FOSS -- that the FOSS curriculum covers all the content and practices that the kids need to know? And what we want to do is assure them, because you can't see that from a grade-level snapshot. It's not until you see what the progression is from grades K through grade five that you see that you cover all of the practices, all of the content standards. So we want to do that with the teachers. We also want to discuss the progression of the practices, because there are certain practices that need other practices as predecessors. So, for example... So, for example, in the content area, you shouldn't talk about density until you know what mass is and what volume is. So, there are things that should come before other things, and they're saying, you need to be able to ask questions before you can make an argument. Okay, so, we want to discuss the progression, the appropriate grade-level progressions of the practices. That's one of the next steps. Rolling out the finished version of the common assessments that we started. Relate the common assessments to progress reports because the progress reports use words that, that the kids are expected to know about. So, if they're expected to know about the practices, we need in our, in our progress report, words about the practices. So, and also about the content areas. So, so we're trying to relate those, the reporting mechanism with what the kids are, what we're valuing that the kids should know about. We are also advocating for increased time in the elementary day for science activities and instruction. If I go to the next slide, this is a direct quote from the Massachusetts Science and Technology Engineering Standards, okay? That, and they, they worded it this way, "Time assumed by DESE for elementary science instruction in order to cover the 2016 STE standards, grades 3 to 5, 3 hours per week." We're about half that. We need to adjust that time. This is, I hope, an ongoing discussion with elementary teachers, principals, and all of us so that we can somehow overlap our content coverage in ELA and math and science so we're really overlapping and killing two birds with one stone. We need to do that. At Gibbs, this year, we have spent a lot of time rolling out the 6th, 7th, and 8th grade resources that I've mentioned to you before. They come with all kinds of wonderful support materials, online versions, versions that you can change the reading level of from 1 to 5. And, and if you can see the top word, it says Massachusetts, you know, so these big publishers, they publish a nationwide book, but Massachusetts is different. Our standards are a little different than the NGSS. So, they rearranged and made a Massachusetts version, and that's what we have. It's exactly aligned to the Massachusetts standards. So, we're at that stage where 6th and 7th resource, resources are basically purchased. The 7th grade teachers were piloting them this year. That means piloting is sort of dipsticking. You pick an activity out, you get yourself familiar with the format. You may not use another one for another month, and you get yourself familiar with it, and you talk about it among yourselves, and then the next year, you pull it out. 7th grade will be pulling it out next year. And we have arranged for the grade 8 resources to be purchased over the summer, and so they will be piloting it next year. And then the following year, they will roll it out in full regalia, so. And I'm sorry, somehow, I didn't realize that my shrinking of this for the slide didn't include all of it. So, I'll just tell you, basically, this is another, in that, those textbooks that I just showed you the picture of are all of these prompts that are formative assessments that are related to the practices. As you can see, this is based on, on argumentation that's based on evidence. So, Sarah's group obtained two thermometers and a glove. They put one thermometer in the glove, one on the table next to it, and they were supposed to come back in an hour. And then they're asked, what do you think Sarah's group will discover when they, when their investiga, from their investigation? Click the response that best matches your thinking. Now, the responses involve different ways to interpret this. So, it's an interpretive kind of thing, and it follows one of the practices. These are all embedded in those texts. This, there are a couple hundred of them in each of those middle-school texts. So, that's just as an example, that it's really aligned to where everything's going.
So, Larry, is the table and the mitten and the two thermometers, is this table and the sunshine?
No, no, and there's no, no dividing line of shadow and sun in the room. Yes, maybe that's not clear enough, but I don't know what that first paragraph is.
I don't either.
Yeah. And that's a good question. You're examining and you're observing, so. Also, in, in the new text resources, there are 200, I think, is that the number there? 200 engaging, of course, this is publisher language, but, but there are all kinds of PBL activities where kids can, can get involved in longer-term investigations. We can't do 200. We could probably barely do four in a year, maybe two. But, that's where things are going as well. We want the kids to do longer-term observational activities that engage them in the practices. We want them to be scientists. This year, we're, oh, at AHS now, we've moved on. We're continuing our discussions and planning for a new building. That's a, that's a continual discussion. Every time we have a discussion about resources, rooms, tables, access, we talk about the new building so that we have our ideas somewhat formulated when it's time to present things here and there at, at meetings. We continue to shoehorn classes into, into lab classrooms that are too few, too old, and too inadequate. They really are. Now, we're expanding because we have, I don't know, 100 more kids coming? And our lab classes crept up again, even though we tried to keep them at reasonable numbers, somewhere in the 30s. You know, we're trying to stay ahead of that. In order to do that, we need to expand into another part of the building. So, not all of our science classrooms will be contiguous, you know, it's just something we have to live with for a while. And we're trying to look, look at the data, look at the testing data, look at other kinds of data, and figure out what's the best thing we can do to improve our program. So, our next steps, we're going to continue planning for the building, we're going to continue taking over the school, one room at a time, you know, and all the other departments get mad at science because we can't as easily teach in any room. We need certain facilities, so we can only use certain rooms, and it's a strain. So, we're trying to really build PBL, project-based learning capacity by leveraging projects that we have with groups that help support us, groups outside as well as our own work inside. Some of the existing groups that we work with, the Conquer Consortium, Harvard Smithsonian Center for Astrophysics, MIT, the Office of Naval Research, and we have some upcoming more projects with Harvard CFA, Conquer Consortium, ONR, and now we're starting a relationship with MYRWA, that's the Mystic River Watershed Association, so that's a more localized thing. We're going to have our 7th grade doing studies on local watersheds under some of the guidance of the MYRWA. So, that's a PBL thing, it'll be a longer-term project. And the upcoming topics, we're working, now, some of these are proposed because they need some grant funding, and we're talking with the granting agencies and working with them to try to secure these grants. Where, big data is a buzzword, and it's used all over the place now. You know, we study big data sets because we have supercomputers to manage the data, and we can look for trends and patterns, and there's a lot of data from Mars, the Curiosity Rover and whatever, and we want, we're setting up a data analysis project with our astronomy and physics classes so that the kids will learn how to, the techniques of using big data. It's a cutting-edge kind of tool. Smart IR, next week, one of our teachers is going to work with Conquer Consortium that blends infrared cameras with AI, artificial intelligence, so that you can partially automate those things that can be automated and make interpretations. We're going to be working, hopefully, again, proposed on the Jason Project, an Oceans Project, Ocean Data. And this is an interesting and exciting one because I, because I have a good relationship with the Conquer Consortium, they have projects outside of science. This is one that crosses the boundaries of English and math, and I, I got the, the English and math people excited about it. The project's called Turning Narrative Into Numbers. It's about the language of narrative and the language of mathematics. What's common? There's more common than you would ever think. So, the teachers, hopefully, if this project goes through, will be exploring that. And there's the watershed analysis, so. One of the smart, smart IR project things has to do with, you know, student experiments and long, and PBL stuff. So, there's a tulip on the left, on the upper left, okay? And there's that same tulip through an infrared camera on the bottom right. And you can notice two little thermometers in the picture, and you can move those thermometers around with the cursor, and they will tell you because of the infrared colors what the temperature is there. So, you can see the one to the right, upper right is 19.89, and the one in the center is 22.30. Well, if you look back to the upper-left picture, what's in the center? What color is it?
Black.
It's dark, it's absorbing more sunlight, okay? And that's about 2 or 3 degrees different, okay? That's a yellow tulip. What's happening to the petals of it? It's pretty wide, right? Have you ever watched a tulip bed at night?
It's closed.
This was open when I brought it from home. It's closing. Tulips close at night. Well, that upper tulip is bright red. Sorry about that, I don't know what happened with my color stuff here. And, but there's something about the shape of the petals. They're not open, they're partially closed, and you notice that the temperature difference here is about 5, 5 degrees. Well, and the one picture I did forget to put in here is a field of tulips at night. And in the infrared camera, it's a bunch of glowing tulip flowers. And if I were a bug and I wanted a place that were 5 degrees warmer, I would crawl in that tulip before it closed. And that bug would probably aid the pollination of that tulip by walking around and carrying pollen. So, there's some evolutionary aspects here. These are valid scientific experiments that kids can make individually. Okay, go out there and find some, take, take a picture, an infrared picture of it, and tell me something about it that you saw in the infrared picture that you didn't see in the other picture. And, and that's a scientific experiment, it's original research, and kids can do this. So, here are some homes around Arlington, and you've probably seen home analysis people doing infrared camera pictures of homes, and you can see where the leaks are, and the kids see this, and they get to learn how to be an energy auditor. And this is a project where you take a, a picture of, you know, an aerial picture of a school, and then you, using a CAD tool that we, that these, what we call a Smart CAD, another part of a project from Conquer Consortium, and the kids take that CAD program, redesign their school, the bottom picture, that's all, that's all virtual, and then, you know, with those temperature probes and stuff, monitor what's happening, and it completely analyzes the building. The kids become energy auditors of their own school building, and that's all. So, I just wanted to give you a flavor of where we're going, you know, how we're doing with testing, I'm done, thank you, Karen, how we want to introduce much more in the way of problem-based learning, really engage the kids. Questions?
Dr. Seuss?
Is that a question or a salute? We had a call down.
Two questions. One is, I've heard that, that there were some problems, or there might be problems, but the FOSS kits, because there aren't enough for each class.
I'm sorry, the one?
The FOSS kits in the elementary school?
Yes.
That they're not, because they're not enough for each class, the way teachers would like to do things is to all teach the same thing at the same time, and they're not able to do that because they have to share these kits. And I'm wondering, and that was early on, I heard that, that concern, have we found a workaround?
We've caught up with.
Are we planning on having a FOSS for every class, or?
Yes and no. We, I would love it if every classroom had all three kits that that classroom had to take, you know, and use, but that's an expensive venture. And, and so, we rotate, the idea is to rotate within a grade level. There are three kits that each teacher should be teaching. And if, we now have, in all, in the classrooms, in the schools where a grade level has two classrooms, we have one set of kits, and that's enough, they can share those. In class, in schools where there are four classrooms at a grade level, we have two sets of kits so that teachers only have to share with one other person.
So, how have they worked out that their practice has to be different? So, you know, because they, they can't do what they used to do, right, which is to all teach the same thing, so they have to?
Well, they never could with our program. When we had the old STC kits five years ago, it was the same thing, they had to share kits.
Okay.
So, we're not any different now.
Okay.
I mean, we spent, we have spent almost $200,000 on the FOSS kits we have. So, to bring them to every, every classroom, we'd have to have another $200,000. That's not an easy reach. This works okay if everybody's faithful to it, and we're, that's one of the reasons why we want to have the common assessments. We need to know where we're falling behind. If some kid is not being taught somewhere, we need to be on that. And we need to make sure that it's understood and, and that the teachers know, that, that common crosswalk I was talking about, they need to know that if they don't do one of the kits, somebody down the line is going to suffer for that. So, that's part of the reason for that.
Okay, I have one more question about, it doesn't involve money as much. I remember my daughter's experience in middle school is that each year, she would have a teacher who would tell her, this is how you do a lab, and all those other ways are just crazy and wrong. And then the next year, she'd get to another class, and, and they'd say, oh, no, those ways are just crazy and wrong, this is how you do a lab. And I'm wondering if there's, you know, sort of an attempt to standardize that, or, you know?
There is, and, and they are, that's part of the reason for going to a new text. Our old texts were old, they were so out of date. And people had adapted and adopted their own, is this, is this the hook?
No.
Just checking. They, they, in order to fill in, the teachers did a good job of adopting their own things, but that doesn't lead to consistency. So, now, everybody has the same course, and everybody's being asked to be faithful to that course. Now, those books had more than they could ever use in them. So, we still have some culling to do to make sure we cover all the standards, and that's the next, that's the next step there. But yes, we're looking for that consistency. And, you know, although kids sometimes get different impressions, oh, yeah, we do it differently here and there, and a lot of times, it's, they don't quite see the whole picture because they only see their own classroom. So, when we see that going on, we, we can regulate that anyway, but, but there's more of a focus on that. Other questions?
Yes.
I have a son who's in the middle school, we never get that level of detail from my son.
I never did either for my kids.
Yeah, I know, it's amazing, it's good parenting. So, I have a question about the, the common assessments, a series of questions, the common assessments. Did you, did, did we have common assessments? I thought we've had common assessments, but we have not.
Not in, not at, not in the elementary school science. We have common assessments at the high school and the middle school, but not at the elementary school.
And the common assessments you're going to be developing for K through 5? And the common assessments you're going to be developing for K through five or just...
Mostly one through five.
Yeah, one through five, yeah, and K, okay. And are these, are they both formative and summative assessments?
Yeah, we have plenty of both, but the common assessments will be formative, basically. One of the, the primary focus of common assessments is not for the kids. It's not to give them grades. It's to give us as administrators and teachers information about what we're doing with consistency. Because we have seven buildings.
Yeah.
And seven principals and seven sets of teachers. And the only way we're going to know how consistent we're being is to give them all the same common assessment.
Yeah. How many, how many times a year you think of administering common?
At the end of every kit. That's three times a year.
Three times a year, but it'll be formative, not necessarily...
Mostly formative. I mean, they will, the results of those will be able to be used by the teachers in the report card because the language will be the same. So when a parent comes in to talk with a teacher about, here's what your kid's doing, here's what I see, and one of the pieces of evidence they can cite is the common assessment because it's focused on the practices and the content standards.
Okay. The next question is about the time discussion at the elementary level trying to, you guys are advocating for three hours, which is the state...
Good, I'd hope you'd ask that.
Aspiration or state expectation. I think we're...
Assumption.
So Rod left, oh, here it is, okay. So what I just, could you, I mean, I, you know, could you just share what the dialogue's like within the leadership about this? Is this, is this a reasonable, is this, is this going to happen? Is this realistic? Is there a plan to kind of try to implement this in school year 20 or...
I fully believe it'll happen. And in some cases it doesn't happen, but it's not that anybody's nefariously...
No, I meant, I'm assuming that, I'm assuming that there's all goodwill. I'm just...
They have their own cultures and they have their own things they want to cover and they're all good things. But we want them to cover all of the standards. So we just, there's no way to report that right now.
Yeah.
That's why we want the common assessments.
So a couple of things that we're doing, and this is also related to the proposal for the new schedules, because we're taking that as an opportunity to create a model elementary schedule. So working with the teachers and this principal to say, what does the daily schedule look like? And so that discussion will be integrated into our planning for next year in the new format of the schedule. Also, you know, we need to, as Larry was talking about next steps, is they've done a lot of work around identifying essential standards for each one of the grade levels. So if we can't get to all the standards, these are the ones we have to make sure that the teachers are able to emphasize to prepare students for the next grade. And that's not only done for science, but in all the content areas. Because it is a lot to make, to teach, but we have to make sure that we're making, that we're identifying those essential standards that every student needs in order to matriculate to the next grade.
Yeah. I mean, obviously, I can't point to any study, you probably can, but I suspect the more exposure a student has to science in the elementary grades, the more likely they are to like the subject when they're older.
Absolutely. And also like finding ways that we can integrate, like, so integration is another way. So we're like looking at the model schedule for, you know, teachers, looking at essential standards and seeing where we can integrate, you know, with literacy, social studies, math, and so really like looking where we can integrate with literacy and science, literacy and, I mean, I'm sorry, math and science. So looking for those ways that we can see where the overlap is there. And then that will be another way that we can ensure that these essential standards are being taught. And we're maximizing the amount of time that we have in a school day in order to teach everything.
Got it. Last question, project-based learning. You said you're moving towards more project-based, you're doing some now though, right?
Oh, yes. There is, you know, we just, we need to make sure it's more uniformly across all the teachers and classrooms, excuse me, and that we have enough of it that kids really...
Is it, you think about project-based learning for K through 12 or are you thinking about it more at grade?
Yeah, I'm, K, always project-based.
Yeah, I know. That's amazing. But I mean, upper elementary...
At all, at all three grade band levels.
Yes.
FOS is already project-based.
Yeah, that's what I figured.
So we really don't have to create anything there.
Yeah.
The middle school and the high school, as we revise and adopt new resources, we want to make sure that the project-based learning opportunities are there.
Got it. Okay.
A couple of things. One, to follow up on the time, I was wondering, do, are other towns able to provide the three hours or two or three hours? Do we know or...
I'm sorry, I didn't quite...
In terms of the instruction time for elementary school, are other towns able to provide two hours or three hours a week for elementary school science?
Well, that's what we're, we're working on, you know? We're working at how to overlap...
Right, no, I mean, other towns.
Oh, other towns, oh, I'm sorry. I missed that part. I actually don't know. I know some towns.
I would think that the DESI using the word assumption is a pretty good indicator that everyone's struggling with this.
They are, yeah. And I speak with science directors all over eastern Massachusetts. We're having a meeting tomorrow. And we talk about this stuff and they're all, they are all struggling with it. Some meet it more than others. And that's, and I don't know what they have to give up to do that. And, you know, so that's a, that's a really good question. I don't have a real clear answer for that right now.
Okay.
Something that needs to be looked at.
And then about the kits, I'm just wondering, why can't you have, like Pierce does all kit, all their teachers do kit one, and Stratton does all kit two, and Bishop does all kit three, and then at the end of the unit, they pick up and they shuffle. So now...
Yeah, that, we thought about that. In fact, we used to, a few years ago, we used to do homespun kit renewals every year. And it was so time-consuming, so we looked at farming that out. And we found a great provider in Rhode Island that would do that for us. And they said they will keep track of all that and they will refurbish them and then deliver them to the schools we tell them to. It's a little bit more complicated than that because we have to figure out that rotation. And it's a little bit more costly because it takes transportation to send them to Rhode Island and back three times a year. So, I mean, we're talking about seven times five, thirty-five grade level, building grade levels and three to four teachers at each of those grade levels and three kits at each of those grade levels. So we're talking about 140 kits. It's not a trivial matter. And each kit has two to three major boxes of supplies. And so it's a lot of, you know, it's a van to go back and forth. And so we're exploring that. And we think that there's a good possibility for that. But it's going to take some probing and some thinking and analysis of the finances and et cetera.
Yeah, it just seems like it's a way of getting all the teachers able to teach the same subject at a school. And so they'd be able to collaborate and work together.
And we are...
Without having to buy the expensive kits, I mean, more expensive kits.
I would be worried about the flexibility with that because if I'm a teacher, that means everybody has to be teaching at the same speed, at the same pace. And that's not, I don't think that's ever going to be the case. So if I'm, if I'm ready to be done, if I'm ready to go on to the second kit, then I have to wait in order to get that kit from another school. And it would be a logistical nightmare.
You're right.
For us to be able to do that.
There are a lot of logistical things and things like life science kits can't really effectively be used in the middle of winter because you can't ship snails and aludia and, and all that stuff. We have tried that and they come here dead.
Yeah, we did have a problem.
And the kids are so disappointed.
Live samples.
Yeah, so, so we, there are a lot of these little hurdles.
Okay.
But we are examining that and those are good possibilities. Thank you for suggesting that because, and also the fact that we are also experimenting with how we transfer kits, how we teach those, who teaches those kits. There are some schools we're experimenting with where, for example, the kit are on rocks and minerals. It's taught by one teacher only, okay? They're the expert at it. And they teach all three of the classrooms that kit, one after another. They become experts at that. And then while another teacher might be doing, you know, any college unit and whatever. So we're trying to see, you know, we're trying to examine different possibilities.
Mr. Hayner?
I'd like to commend the idea of integrating the different subjects together to maximize the time because I think DESI turns around and says, these are the ideal amounts of time for each one of these. And if we taught all those subjects in isolation, you'd have a class day probably eight to nine hours that wouldn't work. Having a student writing reports or writing things up in a good grammar and integrating that part of it, meeting the standards in writing, meeting the investigation standards, writing arguments for and against, as you shared with us here, I think that's a great way of doing it because the world doesn't exist in isolation. And you have students that excel in science and are weak in literature or, excuse me, writing and grammar and vice versa. And this gives the opportunity for the child to succeed in his or her strengths and at the same time gain the knowledge and skills from each other, working collaboratively together. So I applaud maximizing the time, being creative. Thank you.
We agree and the teachers and principals all agree. We're just trying to figure out the structures that will make that work.
If, I just may add one more thing. As a third and fourth grade teacher with kits and stuff, I did not put my box together the night. It always ended up the person who got my kit was fastidious and very orderly and my kit, it should have gone the other way because she never appreciated my mess, so.
I'm just thrilled by this presentation. I can read between the lines because, you know, as an elementary educator, I could see just some of the really cool stuff that you're pulling off. And I would probably get lost in an hour and a half conversation about science instruction in the schools because there's so much...
And I'm sorry I'm taking so long from our technology people here.
Oh, that's okay. I mean, we, you know...
We're here all night.
Yeah, 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 yeah. You know, people think I'm a techie, but I'm not. But I love the science instruction. Now, my question for you is this, is that when we're doing the units, I agree with you on the need for common assessment as a way to sort of take a temperature on what's going on in seven schools and five grade levels across the system so you could tease out where to send additional support. But my real question is, because I don't know this, I mean, we've got parents on the board who see this all the time, do our report cards reflect the habits of mind that you're growing here and the specific standards you're going for?
That's a good question. And the answer is that right now, no. And the reason was when we started out this shift to FOS, we knew that there would be a lot of stress on the teachers, that they would, they're going to take, it's a good three years, four years for them to get solidly invested and be familiar with them. And that we didn't want to burden them with a detailed eight-point progress report because they wouldn't, first of all, know, you know, if I put those eight standards up there again and I asked a fourth grade teacher, where do you see those in a classroom? They'd say, I don't know. You know, I, how do I recognize them? How do I report them? What is the language I need? We needed to get there first. We needed to have them have the familiarity with it and then revise it. So we made two basic overall points in the progress report. Do you understand the content of this kit? And can you demonstrate some practices in this kit? That's, that's our simple start. But the intent is to go and broaden those now.
Yeah, because I find that when you get to the point where teachers can talk about progress towards standards and then describing the habits of mind that are associated with good science investigation, that just sort of encourages more awareness and it's really nice cycle of conversation among teachers and interacting with students where it, this is where assessment tends to build joy if your assessment instrument is looking for the joyous things that are happening. So anything we can do to help along on this matter, I think that's really a worthy thing.
I think we, I appreciate that statement of support. I think with the work of Dr. Neal, we, we have our new assessment recording...
We have our data bank.
Our data bank, yes. And we're so new that I don't even know what it's called yet. But that will be a place to make some of this transparent so that teachers can enter things there and we can all look at it. And a teacher from Hardy can look at what a teacher from Stratton is doing and we can know what each other is doing.
Because a teacher with a literacy background is used to the thought of running records. And if we can frame the science habits of mind and some of the standards in much the same way, I think that it just has this nice relationship that improves instruction, makes kids happier, makes teachers happier and just is very engaging. So just keep on keeping on. I mean, I love this stuff and would love to...
But you asked how the school committee could help. So as we cycle through the five-year plan, as we start maybe a new five-year plan after this one, looking at the way that we can implement or secure more coaching at the different levels. So that would be a way that I would suggest that we could support this as we move out into the future. Like we're hiring one, 1.0 FTE science coach for next year. But after that, you know, we would need to have more coaches that can go into the classroom. We can have the job embedded professional development for teachers. And that to me is a, is a, is a great way to continue to advance that scientific learning and meeting the standards.
Yeah. Thank you.
Anyone else? No? All right.
Thank you, Larry.
Thank you for all of your continued support and interest. That shows your support.
So just a new process for the committee. Our policy IGD about curriculum adoption is, were just slightly differently than our old policy. I'm just going to read the relevant section. The committee wishes to be informed of all new courses and substantive revisions in curriculum. It will receive reports on changes under consideration. Its acceptance of these reports, including a listing of the high school program of studies, will constitute its adoption of the curriculum for official purposes. So I would entertain a motion of acceptance of this report on the science curriculum.
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? Unanimous. Thank you. Okay, so next up is the technology plan. Dr. McNeil?
Yes, so I'm going to invite our chief technology officer for the town and for the school district, Mr. David Good, and our director of digital learning, Ms. Susan Bisson, to the table. They will accompany me and we are going to present to you the 2018 to 2021 technology plan. So I have that currently displayed up on the screen behind me.
Yep.
You got the same issue.
Yeah, it's blue.
So, yeah, we don't, we're not going to be using it. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to introduce the plan by going through how it's formatted. And then Mr. Good and Ms. Bisson will, you know, fill in and give some details as to some of the highlights that we are working on for each one of the years. So the way that the plan is formatted is that we have begun to give a major goal for the new plan is, is going to be driven by the 2016 Massachusetts Digital Literacy and Computer Science Curriculum Framework. And it was adopted in, as this title says, in 2016. So we've been doing some work around looking how that, like creating curriculum and units of study that will align with those standards. And then the guiding principles that are given support the foundation for those standards. And then if you look at the context for the technology plan, I try to give, or we try to give an idea of what has happened since the last technology plan, that was in the 2014 to 2018 technology plan that was implemented by my predecessor. So since that plan, you know, there have been some highlights that have happened here in Arlington, but also throughout the state. So one of the things that we've done since that plan... So one of the things that we've done since that plan is we have adopted the G Suite for Education Apps, which includes Google Classroom. And we have also done some work around integrating project-based learning into content area instruction. Statewide, there's been the evolution of the MCAS, the online testing platform for all students. So that has impacted our purchasing of digital learning devices for students. And we've also expanded our digital media literacy courses at the middle and high school level. And also to give some idea of like where, what we're using to also drive, you know, what we want for students is we created the vision of student as learner and global citizen. So looking at those skills that the students need in order to be able to address those various behaviors that we're looking for them to adopt as they matriculate or learn as they matriculate through Arlington Public Schools. So we have the Vision of Student as Learner, which is on our website. And then looking at some other accomplishments or accomplishments that were achieved by the 2014 and 2018 plan. So some of those accomplishments as it relates to curriculum is the increased use of online tools and apps that students can use to support their learning. This includes Scratch from MIT, Reading A to Z, and Brain Pop. And we've also expanded opportunities for personalized learning. And we've expanded our Makerspace programming at the Arlington High School. Some of the supports that have been put in place as a result of the 2014-2018 plan is that we've hired Ms. Bissin, who is now our Director of Digital Learning. We've created a district who, and during her tenure, she has done so much. But to highlight one of the things that have been most impactful on our creation of curriculum and trying to provide a consistent way of approaching digital learning and digital citizenship across the district is that she has created a district-wide digital literacy team. And also because of the plan, the 2014-2018 plan, we've developed the Bring Your Own device for grades six through 12. And as it relates to hardware, we've definitely increased the number of student laptop and iPad carts at the elementary, middle, and high school levels. And so those are some of the highlights that I wanted to, of the 2014-2018 plan. So now I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Bissin and Mr. Good. And then they can talk about as they, as we focus on and on what we've done for the 2018 and 2019 school year and what our plans are for the future.
Hello, everybody. Nice to be here. So when I was here last time, I mentioned that it's been an exciting year, a very busy year. And I want to talk about a couple of things in particular that we've taken on. One is the Student Data Privacy Initiative that we began last spring with the Technology Department data specialists and working with Rod. It's, we now have a new process in place for requesting online resources. We are working with an organization called Tech. And they are helping, they have a contract service that has recently been launched that I'm not sure how many districts. When I spoke to them in early in the year, I think it was something like 25 districts in Massachusetts and then several New England states that they are working with to provide basically a default contract that everyone can use for their districts. That's been vetted by lawyers and developed with vendors. I'm sorry? Oh, you, yes, yes. So it's working very well. As Allison has just pointed out, she has made a request. It's working very well. I think it will take a little bit of time for all of our teachers and staff persons to get used to the new process. You know, it's a change and that does require everyone to kind of shift their thinking. But so far, so good. And really, the best thing about it is that we can be very confident that what our students are using, any resources that they have access to that have been vetted and have assigned contract are keeping personally identifiable information and any other information related to students, you know, their, what they're doing online, any tracking. It's all being kept very safe because of our contract system now. The second thing I will talk about is our Digital Citizenship Initiative. We know that digital citizenship is, of course, being taught across the district. But what we're looking to do is create consistency across grade level bands. This work began last year as well with our large digital learning team, which, as I mentioned when I was here earlier, that it's made up of a teacher from each of the elementary schools, two teachers from middle school, and two high school staff persons. We meet monthly. Last year, we were able to take a day in June and talk through what our goals and objectives are for digital citizenship. And we've built on that work over the course of the year. We are doing a limited pilot this spring, which will involve K to 12 classrooms. All of the staff people on the digital learning team will be piloting one or two lessons. We'll have pre and post-assessments. Students will be doing activities related to what they've learned. From the data we collect, then we will go ahead and expand the pilot in the fall. As a final thing, I'll talk about our professional development. We provide professional development each year. This year, we decided to change the way we were providing professional development. And rather than it being building-based, we offered district-wide workshops once or twice a month. We were able to collect some very good data and feedback about that and will use that again this summer and into the next year to refine and improve our professional development with the goal of making it more effective for all of our teachers and staff.
Want to talk about the hardware?
Hi, I'm David Good. I'm the Chief Technology Officer for the town and the school. I'll give you a quick overview of what my department looks like and who I integrate with, who I report to, and where I spend most of my time. So there's 20 people in the IT department currently to take care of network, server, systems, desktop support, training, and the registrar's office here for the school. Those two DBAs come under my umbrella because of their technical background. Mainly, when I first got here, I started to build network infrastructure. Seeing that the railroad has to run on something and it has to be state-of-the-art. It has to be secure. It has to be redundant. It has to be a number of different things. And as we see, as time goes by, systems and connectivity to that infrastructure network grow. Everything that has a wire coming out of it seems to end up in my lap. Anything from energy management systems to cell phones to you name it, printers, security systems. It has gotten fairly complex. But we spend our time on the school side, supporting teaching and learning. There are four or five, we call them desktop network technicians. They in turn are out in the field, each assigned to some number of schools. And they take care of the sort of ticketing system that teachers and admins submit requests to us. Last quarter, we did around 7,000 tickets. So I think that it's a pretty busy place. As far as what we're doing going forward, history lessons like the Gibbs School are sort of very good learning environments for us as we go forward to build a new high school. We will be undertaking moving the core network infrastructure out of the high school. My department is one that is going to move to the DPW building, but we're going to build it first. So I will be leaving this building with my group. But I will need to build in place a new set of network infrastructure so we can both power the new building and the rest of the town. All of the network connections for the 21-town buildings terminate here in the high school. So that'll be some fun, moving those up the street a bit. The good news is, we are on the backbone of the fiber network, same as we are here, and the DPW building. We've engaged ASEAN already. I'm working with the HMFH folks, looking at drawings, talking about design, the upcoming design after approval of funding. And we'll spend a whole lot of time in two phases of this. Building from the bottom up and then participating in what will classroom technology look like in the future? And what will it look like in that building? We sort of have a standard now for our classrooms, you know, which includes, you know, a card of tablets and projection systems and wireless access and sound enhancement microphone system. We're hoping to then learn by our visits to other new schools. I've been to Winthrop, which is a combination junior high, high school, and to Billrica, along with the facilities director who I partner with now, and along with the principal of the high school and a team of people too. My main reason is I sneak into closets and look at wires. So I'm pretty boring. But for the most part, we're trying to engage with folks who have been through a situation like we're going through. And this is sort of a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity, so we should do it right. I think that, so I'll increase the bandwidth again. You hear me say this every couple of years. The sort of industry standard says you should have a gig of bandwidth for every thousand students. We're about two gigs short. We're only using about 60% capacity with the four gig. I'm thinking that the new high school will generate a variety of different types of activity that might be more heavy bandwidth use. So as opposed to wait for that to happen, we'll upgrade it again to probably five to six gig. I'm hoping six, and that'll take care of roughly the 5,800 students we have currently along with staff. We also have been working with the union folks and Rod and Susan and I in an attempt to come to some kind of agreement as to what a teacher device may look like in the future or from this day going forward. Susan's done a survey with the teachers that has come back with some very interesting data that we're now taking a look at as far as what people use their systems for. And we're thinking that Chromebooks are a very good machine for students. And we'll do upgrades in the elementary schools first. We'll do four elementaries this coming year, and we will do grades three, four, and five. And that's a card and new Chromebooks for each third, fourth, and fifth grade for those four schools. We will then upgrade two schools worth of teachers' equipment, and that is sort of a TBA. We're hoping it's going to be Chromebooks because a lot of our pricing models or our models as to how we spend our money and what we can afford bears heavily on a certain price machine. So we've been sort of cutting corners here and there to try to support. A $1,000 MacBook is pretty difficult with the current budget constraints that we have. And I was reluctant to go out to the Capital Budget Committee this year and ask for more money for the schools during a time when we're asking for more money from the town and the citizens. So I just didn't think that was the right time. So we will analyze this data and come to some kind of a conclusion, along with our partnering with teachers and the union reps. So hopefully, we'll be able to put something out prior to the start of school next year. So we're working that. I hit on construction projects, voice-over IP. A lot of that's also sort of built into our infrastructure. That's our new telephony system. It is in four of our schools now. It is in the Gibbs, the Thompson, the Bracket, and the Hardy. It will be in the Pierce and the Stratton probably in a couple of months. It does have some interesting integration features where it does integrate with our PA systems in the school, depending on the level of PA. Most of our PA systems in the rebuilt schools are all new. So a feature that a principal can do now is make a call to all rooms and an announcement to all rooms from anywhere in the building, as opposed to just having to run back down to the office and, or call to the office and make this announcement. There are also other features about turning email into voicemail and voicemail into email. There is a paging system, so in a text messaging system built into this. We're investigating its use for emergency alert. We're also beta-testing an emergency alert product, which has not been as successful as we had hoped. But we're working that. We will continue to upgrade our wireless network. As technology changes, access points like that one up there become more powerful. They have more built-in radios. And I think that we put larger access points in large use areas like media centers or learning commons, gymnasiums, auditoriums. And I think that that, our new schools have a sort of an upgraded version of that access point. But we want to provide less contention, especially during MCAS. MCAS, we have to announce to the rest of the buildings, you know, shut off any devices, have the kids shut off their phones, and a variety of things. We do about 10,000 to 12,000 wireless connections a day. And we don't have that much equipment. I mean, we have probably 7,000 pieces of equipment that we own that talk to the wireless network. The rest is students, teachers. And it's usually, you know, the sort of standard was, you know, everybody would have a machine. Well, not really. Everybody has two or three. So I think that, you know, we've built it to bend. We'll continue to upgrade it so it doesn't fall over. And I think for the most part, Rod and Susan and I have been having a lot of fun with your support and certainly a lot of interesting project work. We have a lot more to do. And I think that putting technology to use at the teacher's hands to enable them to deliver teaching and learning at our, I don't say a better quality because we really do a good quality job here now doing that. So I'm challenged to attempt to make our schools' rating and our children's learning experience better than it is now. And I think that in itself will be tough, but I think we're ready for the challenge.
And one thing that we've done in order to increase the communication is that we also have monthly meetings between Davis Department and digital learning. So we can talk to each other to make sure that the technical side and the instructional side, that we're aligned. that we're aligned with the various projects that we would like to complete.
All right, Dr. Sis.
A bunch of things. So a question for Mr. Good first. So I'm wondering if we've looked into recently whether we'd want to move away from having servers on-site. I know, a question that wouldn't have made sense 10 years ago, but now makes sense for a lot of companies and other places, is to have servers that are out there in the cloud.
75% of the school service are hosted off-site in the cloud already.
Okay, so we don't, oh, so we don't actually have all our servers on-site? Okay, got it, okay. Because that was my impression from something else, okay.
Okay, no, that has been part of our work for the past couple of years to try to-
Excellent, that sounds more secure.
Yes.
And we don't have to worry about that kind of infrastructure upkeep. Okay, so then questions for Ms. Bishen. So, well, actually, for both of you maybe, this online survey. I was glad to see that you guys have done the online survey of teachers. There isn't a lot in the report. I assume that you also got some other, like, comments or other things? Is there, in terms of what are you getting from teachers about the adequacy of their systems? So there's only two questions in the survey. Did you get?
Ah, yes, no, there were two questions. I believe there were six altogether.
Okay, so there's only two in this report.
So, and I will add the rest.
Okay.
You'll get a better idea of what teachers let us know. We talked primarily about what, or asked what their primary device is that they're currently using. We asked a question about whether the device they're using meets their needs for teaching and learning right now. And we continued with a couple of questions about mirroring. There were opportunities for teachers to add comments as well.
Okay, great. They say it doesn't meet our needs, you're like, well, why? It'd be interesting to know those kinds of things, okay.
We did that as well.
Great.
We also look at help desk ticket data to look at frequencies, standard deviations, and things of that nature based on the type of equipment folks are using and what is the most frequent complaint and what do you have the most trouble with? And incorporate that in our decision-making.
Also, can you mention the value from having those, the digital lead teachers, if you will, on your team? And so you can also get input from them-
Yes.
-that you integrate into your monthly meetings?
Yep. So I've been working with this group of teachers, and we have a core group that's been with me for quite a few years now before I moved into this position. And the real benefit is that they have technology knowledge, and they are sort of the liaisons between their staff and our group. So we are constantly-
Getting information.
-getting information and talking about challenges. And I'm a very firm believer in the fact that we have to include all of our stakeholders, if you will. It's not enough to simply make a decision about what device we think will work well for teachers because we have this expertise. That's not practical, won't be effective, and will lead to problems down the line. So we definitely are, you know, talking about these things constantly, and it certainly is not limited to devices. We, you know, MCAS, digital citizenship, I mean, all the things that come up for teachers around digital literacy and using online resources and tools.
Great. One more thing, sorry. So I was glad to see that you had a link to your website with some resources. You should check the links.
Pardon me?
You should check the links.
Let me just tell you, I'm not sure whether members of the school committee have Arlington email addresses.
We do.
We do.
Yeah, you do. So the links to our digital learning website, you need to log in with your Arlington email.
No, no, I'm just saying, so there's one that's broken, only one that I saw. But there's another one that's just inappropriate. So you just should check on it. The Parenting Tips for Monitoring Social Media goes to a paid, entirely paid content site with some comments that while not explicit are not appropriate. So you should check on that.
Will you repeat that, Jen? Which link is it?
Parenting Tips for Monitoring Social Media.
Thank you.
Yeah. I have another question, but I'll let somebody else go.
All right. Well, anybody else? No, Dr. Allison Ampi.
I was wondering how you folks assess, as you're making decisions about Chromebooks versus iPads or whatever for the students, how you're assessing what apps are available and whether they perform the tasks that teachers want them to do in terms of teaching or not? You know, how are you assessing? It's kind of both the tech, but it's also really what you get with the tech, you know, the apps and how well they work? And can you get the ones that you want with the devices?
So our current approach is a bit varied. We, as digital learning folks, attend a couple of conferences a year. And so we will find out about resources or tools that we're interested in using. And then our teachers and staff do the same, attending conferences, professional development activities, and they will find out about things that they would like to use. This happens as well with department heads, you know, finding out about things to support science or literacy curriculum. So given that, that people are kind of finding out about something that will meet a need, a learning goal, then they will now, based on our process, take a look to see if that tool is available, has a contract already as part of our digital resources list. And if not, then we have a process to get it approved. But to continue that answer, we do have a certain amount of expertise, and we are really the first evaluators of what teachers are asking for.
Right, but I'm talking about, once you've used them, who goes back and says, okay, that one really, you know, that's worth doing. This one is not worth doing. And then looking at the pile of, you know, these are the ones that are worth doing, and look, they're all available only on this platform or on the other. You know, I'm saying it seems like there's multiple. It's not just finding the apps, it's also, are they actually worth using? And where does that feed back?
So we don't have a specific framework that we use. We talk to teachers, we're in classrooms, we're finding out if what they're using is actually meeting their objectives. Additionally, we have, I think what you're asking is how we are assessing. Is that the correct word?
Yeah.
Yeah. So our core group of apps is really what's included in the Google app. And teachers, to varying degrees, use those apps for assessment of all kinds. Common assessments that we heard Larry talking about. Much more informal writing, pieces of writing that they will evaluate. In terms of going through and trying to assess each additional online tool we have, we do not have a process that we engage in cyclically or across the board for that. We have quite a few online tools we use. And so part of that work is done by the curriculum leaders, and to a great extent, us too. But it's not anything we do sort of in a bulk manner. You know, we're going to go through and check off everything on our list.
Okay, thank you.
Well, that's part of the value in Susan's team. So she has, the teachers that are on her, that are lead technology teachers are actually in the classroom. So they have that exposure to those apps. So it's the feedback that you get from the teachers that, and the usage. So Susan and I meet every year, and we look at the various online tools. And if they're not being used on a consistent basis, and we're paying for a particular online tool, then we have to do some research as to why it's not being utilized. And then we make a decision of whether or not we're going to just narrow it to those individuals who are using it and they find value in it. Or we just eliminate it altogether and say, we need to just replace that with something that's a little bit more useful. But in this particular realm, it's like really teacher feedback. And we have hundreds of apps. So it's really difficult. And one thing that we don't want to do is we don't want to curtail teacher creativity as well. So something that, you know, that's going to be subjective at a certain particular point in time. So some people might find value in like, you know, a certain app or online tool that makes videos available, which is called, what's it called, Discovery? What was the one that for social study?
Discovery Education.
Discovery Education. So we found like not every teacher was using it. But some teachers found very valuable, found it to be very valuable. So we've tailored it or customized it so that those teachers who find it valuable, use it. So it's not like a bulk set of apps that we have. I mean, we have a, let me strike that, let me go back and say that we have a lot of apps that are used for different reasons. And so we try to make sure that we are not being so micromanaging to the point where teachers can't have creativity and say, hey, I like this app, but not everybody might not like that app. So that's something that, you know, is subjective and is based upon the teachers, what they want to use it for, and it might be different for various teachers. But that feedback from the teachers is very valuable to us, and usage. So that's one way that we evaluate whether or not the apps are something that we want to keep or we want to move on to something else.
Okay, thank you.
And I'd like to add, sorry, that we are, I think, very good at really finding out what teachers want to use a particular tool for. As part of the request process, and before we moved to this new system, we used a Google form, and it was the same for that. You have to identify your learning goals and standards. So, you know, we're definitely not about trying things just for the sake of trying them. We really do want it to be of value and purposeful.
Absolutely. Susan and I are both members of two different edco directors groups. And two things, teachers aren't shy. They will certainly tell you what they like and what they don't like, and what works and what doesn't work. And I also believe that throughout school districts, good products bubble right up to the top, and you start hearing the chatter about how this accomplishes something that the other tool doesn't. So we get that feedback monthly. So that's another way of sort of trying to move into our selection process, interesting tools for people to use.
That would be related to usage. Like if it's not valuable, and if you don't find it valuable, then they're not going to use it.
And just that point, as Rod was saying about creativity and innovation, I mean, that is really what the goal is for using an online tool. We, just generally, our philosophy is to stay away from apps that are simply going to have students practice math facts. That may have a place, but we're really much more focused on the innovation and how something can be used across subject areas for showing students comprehension and thinking. So.
Okay, Mr. Hayner?
I'd just like to commend Mr. Good and Karen for bringing the committee into the 21st century. Eight years ago, when I came here, these tables, you could not see the brown part. They were covered with paper, tons and tons of paper. And I just looked around, and we've all got computers. Even Mr. Thielman has made the transition. I'm really proud of him. And David helped us through all the bumps and grinds, getting through us. Some nights, we couldn't get online and everything, and Karen suffered through this with us. So thank you both.
Mr. Sipin?
Any way to get us power? Take a look at where Mr. Hayner is plugged into. And when we used to sit together, I could extend my plug over to him, but we're now too far away. I mean, seriously, I mean-
I think we need a new school.
The new building.
We need a new school, but an extension cord and outlets under the table would be better.
The fire chief was here, he turns around and walked out. We had, when we moved the admin group in here, there wasn't enough legitimate electricity, so they ran temporaries. And he was tripping over the wire. He said, I just got to leave, I can't stay. So Paul, it probably could be done. We can get an estimate, and, you know, you know the story.
It shouldn't be something expensive because I don't want to spend a lot of money on something we're going to be living with for only a year or two. But if there's a quick and easy-
High-quality, low-expense.
-fix to at least-
Quick and easy usually doesn't describe installing electricity.
Yeah.
Extension cords, or extension cords.
Fine, okay, I'll look for you.
These orange extension cords that are extending throughout the area aren't particularly good either.
All right, I have a couple of questions.
Oh, go ahead, sorry.
First, then I'll go back to you, Jennifer. So first, the, you know, the issue with the MCAS and taking up all of the Wi-Fi capacity in the school and some of the schools, all of the devices, is that something we're just going to have to live with? I mean, it's some school that's a whole month of testing? Or is that something that we're eventually going to be able to get ahead of?
I think we'll get ahead of it. I think the newer access points have doubled the capacity than the ones that we have now. I mean, we've got 500 throughout the district. So it's a, and they're each about $600. So there's a yin and yang about how many things you do over a certain period of time. And we're always coughing up and doing things over a phased approach. I think that we're now, I think, training the folks in the schools to be more aware. But I think we will eventually get ahead of it. I couldn't tell you when. I guess it depends on how quickly I can acquire funding or juggle some other things into that. But I think it's very important at the elementary level especially because they seem to have the larger amounts of saturation of cards. So I think that that, we'll get to that.
But we're doing very well right now. I don't want to give the impression that it's a problem or hampering the testing process. You know, if I may, I don't think we've had that many-
Now, some of it's paranoia that we ask people to shut things down. I think some of it, like you might be talking about, is where there aren't enough cards for folks to use. And I think we'll fix this next season. The way we distribute them, you can't use them anywhere else now. They're assigned to this block, and you have to put them back in this card, and don't touch them again for anything else. That piece, that'll go away, just by the way we configure and by the way the state has adjusted their software.
Also, the way that we access the testing platform will be changed. So when you have a group of students that are testing, it won't limit other teachers from accessing the Chromebook carts. So that was part of, you know, the way that we have the students sign on to the testing platform, to test nav. So that's going to be changed for next year, and so that won't be a problem.
Yeah, so that's the key, is that, I mean, if they're using Google Classroom, that's an important tool, then suddenly in the month of May, they can't use it because they're told not to go on Wi-Fi. That's the problem. If there's a solution to that, then that's great.
Yes, and I think that all districts across the state are grappling with the fact that the online testing platform has increased over the years, adding more grades. So now we have the high school online. And so now we have all three through eight testing online. So it's something that is a learning process, but I think we're doing very well currently. Our testing cycle this year, we've had very few incidents of kids being kicked off or not having, or having problems based upon the network.
Okay, and then the hardware in the next year, it's all replenishment, right? So it looks like, for the elementary school, you said each classroom has access to a card. Is that a dedicated card for each classroom, or is that a shared card?
It's figured as a dedicated one for grades three, four, and five.
Okay, and then-
For each classroom in each of those four elementaries in year one of that.
And then the Gibbs is currently one-to-one? And the Audison is two cards per cluster?
Right.
So the Audison is the only, out of all those, that's- So the Audison is the only, out of all those, that's basically not one-to-one as far as device? And that's fine? We're going to, going to keep it that way or?
You know, we met with, we met with the principals and asked about, what does one-to-one mean to you? And we, we, we came to the conclusion that if one-to-one, not that it wasn't necessary, but it wasn't used all the time as a one-to-one environment. So you could get away at the high school level with a 70% saturation, middle school at possibly a 50% saturation, and possibly at the elementary K through two or lower. So we, we, we've been going through trying to find the right mix because we don't want to waste. We're still trying to hone in on the, the areas that are really going to use them. Some of it's culture. Some folks will, some folks won't. But the shared card model, people take better care of them. Sometimes you get a little bit used to having your own. And I, I think that we'll, we'll, we'll figure that out.
Okay. And the other ask is, just as we go forward with more and more technology, that we be very, you know, cognizant of, you know, the fact that not everybody has access to technology at home. And I know that there's, you know, some guidance to teachers that they should accept, they should accept assignments through Google Classroom and on paper or whatever. But I just, you know, this is more for, for Ms. Bissin, that, that as you're rolling out more and more curriculum and more and more digital learning, that, that we remain cognizant of that and, and remind teachers of that.
Yes, absolutely.
Dr. Seuss, you had?
Oh, I just have one more question. So I was confusing by the language and I should, and also I should know this about budget. Under 2018 and 19, it says hire two 1.0 positions. Have we done that and what are those people doing?
We've posted the positions because that's in the five-year plan.
Okay, so those are not people we've hired so far?
No.
Okay.
They're posted.
So next year we plan to do those two plus a librarian, technology specialist?
No, that's including the lib, so there's a two positions. There's going to be a library. We're looking for people who are certified in library.
Okay, because there's also two listed in 2019 to 2020, but you're saying those are really?
I'm saying like as we move, so let me strike that. As I, look what you're saying, saying we're hiring two people this year and then as we move forward, I, I didn't know whether or not you were talking about this year or next year.
So under 2018 to 2019, about all the things that we've done.
Yes.
Is included hire these two people, but then it says that will integrate. So it's confusing. Whereas the other things are all things that we've done.
Yeah, so we're still in a 2018, 2019 school year. So we're going to hire them at the, here in the spring and they'll be in place for the fall.
Okay, so we want to hire them now. And then we also are looking to hire two librarians for next year as well.
No, that's the library slash technology person that we're going to hire. Remember, we, we had the budget meeting, we took the library and the tech people and we were conflating them into the library slash technology person.
Under the, then maybe there's just a question of how it's, it's listed. So under 2019 to 2020, on a separate bullet point, there's hire two library digital literacy teachers.
Right, so I'm saying like I have to look back at the five-year plan, but we plan to build on that every year.
So something's wrong about this, you're saying?
No, no, two this year, two next year.
Two this year, two next year.
Well, we have none this year, we're doing two next year.
He put them in the wrong.
Okay, all right. But we also are doing a library person next year. So, right? Or is that, that the same thing is basically, they're just?
Why don't we talk offline and you can let me know?
Okay.
Like what your question is.
You understand?
Yeah, no, I understand your question.
Okay, all right.
It looks like there's four people mentioned here.
It doesn't look like there's four people, yeah.
For this year?
No.
For next year?
Two this year, two next year.
Yeah.
Oh, okay. I'll take a look at that.
Okay.
All right, great. Anything else? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so Jason, you're up next with the surplus space report.
Yes.
Odd name for it.
Well, sorry, I actually titled it, um, after-school programs, financial and enrollment report.
Before, before they leave, I just want to thank.
Yes.
Yes. Susan Bissin and David, can you come back? So everybody can see who you are on camera.
I, I did not introduce myself. I just started speaking, so I should have.
So I just want to say that this is a huge undertaking for the entire district. And not only is David balancing what he's doing for the district, he's balancing that with what he's doing for the town. So I just want to emphasize that these are very talented, knowledgeable individuals and I've just enjoyed working with, and I have every full faith and confidence that we'll meet our goals this year, next year, and beyond. So it, it is a very complex topic to deal with as we look at technology and how we're integrating it into instruction. And there's lots of components to it. And we want to make sure that we're satisfying not only the, what students need, but also what teachers need in order to do their jobs. And so I couldn't be luckier to have two individuals to work with in order to accomplish this very huge task. So I want to thank them for coming out and sharing their knowledge, and I look forward to us doing great things in the future.
We're fortunate.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very fortunate, very fortunate.
I'm not going to be able to shut off the door.
All right.
All right.
So this is the first time we're doing this report, so I'll, I'll explain the format of it. But the report is, is a summarized report of the, the non-district sponsored programs and the sponsored programs. And it was challenging to get the non-district sponsored programs to submit data. But we, it's reporting for, at the Bracket, Arlington Children's Center After-School Program, the Bright Start Program at the Bishop, the After-School Connection at the Dallin, Play Care at Pierce, and a Place to Grow at Stratton. And then there's a few programs that Arlington Public Schools has as a district sponsored program, which is at the Bracket, Gibbs, Hardy, Audison, Thompson. And we're reporting for next year, the Pierce, as the Pierce program will be brought into the after-school program that's managed by Todd Morse. A few things to note. So this report is not complete. We're still trying to get information from the non-district sponsored programs. As you see, if you look at the report, it will have spaces that are blank. Those spaces that are blank, we're still waiting for more information. So once that information is available, we'll make it available to the school committee. The, also to note, the director salaries that we're putting for the after-school program on the, the district sponsored program is a projected salary. That is not, that is different from the rest of the data for the current year, which is the 2018, 2019 set of rows, which are, present expenditures as of May 6 in our financial system. So it can be misleading. That's not the salary to date in our financial system. Below that is the enrollment information with waitlist information. So this is, is, the waitlist information is not, well, enrollment information is not a max capacity number for the programs. It's the, the, the current configuration based on what they can handle with the students that are, may attend maybe two days, three days, four days. Not all students attend all days of the week. Also to note for this report, the Audison numbers are still being worked on. And the Gibbs program for the next year's enrollment is, is still, they're still collecting applications. So these figures will change. So when I get updated information, I will also provide that to you. Information is that, some useful information is that about 22% of the students are, are taking, are part, are participating in the after-school program here in Arlington. And most of those are at the elementary level. Trying to pull up my figures here. And about 83% in terms of the internal program is from K through five, where 17% is at the middle school levels. Well, another challenge in, in terms of this report is the timing and the wording and the policy. So it, it may be helpful to specify in more detail that information, but the timing, the information here is inconsistent because you're looking at the current year expenditures and prior year expenditures. Current year enrollment, but outgoing year enrollment. So it might be helpful, when we do the next report, we'll include prior year enrollment as well as we can build this data going forward. And it, and it may be helpful to look at a possible date change for a report. I don't know that that particular date, but me and Dr. Bodie were discussing this and it might be helpful to, in order to get more accurate information and a better snapshot of what financial information you're looking at.
Mr. Schlichtman?
Yeah, I mean, I commend you for putting this together. I think that this report this year is going to be a challenge because this is the first time it's happening. And we've just started asking for it, so the providers are not used to playing in this ballpark.
Yeah.
So I'm willing to be a little tolerant on, on this, quite tolerant on this this year. And, and accept the reality and difficulty of herding the cats into a unified report. But with the provision that we make it very explicit to the providers going forward as we meet the benchmarks to collect the regular reporting. I think there was a December 31st deadline in one of these things too.
Yeah, so we'll, we'll be, so the December 31st deadline is the financial report. So that information will be, it'll be prior year and that current year, but that, it would be a snapshot. So you wouldn't have all the data, you would be halfway through the year.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
That was one of the concerns is you're going to be looking at one year's number and then a, a as-of number for the other year. For comparison's sake, it wouldn't be apples to apples really.
Yeah, going forward, I'll work. And I think that there'll come a point where the private providers will realize that what we're trying to do is to enhance their ability to attract parents into their programs and make, and help them strengthen their program. We're not doing this as some sort of nefarious oversight program. We're genuinely trying to be a partner, helping to solve problems for families in the district. And we view the private providers as part of the, the solution that we want to work with.
So also, I just would like to let you know that we are, what I didn't, I forgot to say is that we are adjusting the contracts going forward. So to adjust for the language that you've guys would like us to be seeking from the vendors.
Mr. Hayner?
The programs that we have at Bracket, Gibbs, the Arlington After-School, are they part of the school system or are they a private contractor as well?
Yeah, so the district sponsored programs is an internal program that's ran by our employee, Todd Morse.
So we, we're responsible to meet all the state qualifications and requirements by the state for after-school programs and things of that nature, the regulations that cover them?
I believe so, but it's slightly different. We're held to a slightly different standard because those programs are actually certified and it's an, is an internal school program.
Okay, I'm, I'm just curious because these other, by the private, the private group, they're using a school facility.
Yes.
And as such, I, I didn't know where the line is drawn, i- if, if they're under different regulations than, than us.
They're, they're slightly different, but.
Right, they, they still have reporting standards as far as financials and things of that nature. So these numbers, although you don't have them at this time, and I, I agree with Mr. Schlichtman, we're beginning, they need, they are public, that's public information. It should be forthcoming, am I correct, from these people? They can't withhold it, is what I'm saying.
They, I don't know, they don't disclose to the public, they may disclose to a different agency that may have the data available. But I'm not 100% sure of that answer for you.
Okay, I'm, I'm just seeing, they're using a public facility.
Yeah.
And they are regulated by the state to some degree because it, it is a public function. They can't discriminate and all the things of that nature that, that are covered.
Let me get more information for you and get back to you.
I'm just trying to help you to get the information. They shouldn't be holding it back, that's all I'm saying.
Absolutely.
Mr. Thielman?
So a couple of questions. I, one of the things that we were, we were going to get in this report were available classrooms, or remember there was a whole conversation about that?
All right. I did not get that information. I will, when I update the report, I will provide that.
That'd be a good thing to have. And then the other thing is, when you, I'm just looking at the, I'm not, I'm not particularly interested in knowing how much a director makes of a private entity myself. I, I'm perfectly happy if you just group things by, you know, personnel salaries, non-personnel salaries. But is this, in all these things like Bracket, is this, is this an allocation to the program or is this the, the, this has to be an allocation to the program? It can't be the expenses of the entire ACC or is it?
That's the expenses for that particular location.
Yeah, so like if you were, if you were looking at the director's salary, there would only be, whoever runs the, does the finances for ACC would only give you an allocation of.
Correct.
His time for that program.
Yes, it would be a portion of Matt's salary.
If Matt's salary was X, it would be times 20% or whatever it is. Okay, so I mean, I'm not, I'm not sure how much that particular, that's going to give us. I'm not sure what that's going to give us myself, but.
So we, we broke it out, the, the report based on the actual language that was in the policy.
Yeah.
So it, it's, you guys, and the, the policy specifically states director salaries.
I know it did.
Just to clarify though, that was, that was in our prior policy? That was not something we recently added?
I don't think we did.
That was in our policy for a long time and was ignored. I think we're seeing, you know, maybe it can continue to be ignored, I don't know, but.
I'm feeling like.
That was not something we were, that was nothing we recently changed.
And the other thing is I would, I would in your chart, Michael, I would sort of, you know, somehow indicate this, you know, this is an allocation, somehow indicate this is an allocation to this particular program. Some of these have, you know, run larger operations, right? I mean, just to sort of clarify for people.
Yep.
Dr. Allison Ampe?
I'm actually looking at the policy. And it does actually mention, okay, so there's a couple of points. I'm looking at one that says it was revised and approved for 11/19. I'm a little confused because it doesn't have the back and forth that we went about that surplus space is defined by the principal. So I'm not positive this is the most up-to-date version, even though it gives that date. That being said, it does mention that a descriptive brochure, summary of the program along with a financial statement including revenues, the director's salary, teacher's salaries, and supplies, and blah, blah, blah shall be presented to the school committee by the superintendent no later than December 31st of each school year. So it does still mention director's salary. The reason I was looking at it was for the, what Mr. Thielman was bringing up, that we are supposed to have, it mentions the availability of surplus space within the district to accommodate the needs. Something I'm realizing, again, as I'm reading this now, is it doesn't actually mention that we should be talking about how much space they're already using. You know, it doesn't, it, it seems like we should have that component too, right? So I think that's a failing of our policy.
Yeah.
But, so.
Just, just one comment about policies in general. I mean, I think policy tries to be as specific as possible, but then you got to sort of, my guidance would be, you're, you're taking that policy and you're trying to give a full picture to the public and the school committee of what, what, what's really going on. And the real issue for parents is, how many people are on the waiting list? Are there any available rooms in, in the building? Can I get my kid in there? And we're, the school committee is just trying to figure out what the data is so that we can say, you know, yes, no, or whatever. Yep, that's, that's it.
I forgot to say this.
I'm sorry to interrupt you.
No, 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 I just want, I, I forgot to say at the start that despite what I was just saying, I think this is really cool that you're giving us this information.
Yes.
We've never had this information.
Yes.
So this is amazing.
Yeah.
I'm mentioning the other because I think we do, we need to know this other information too, but just, this is a great start, so thank you.
Yes, I agree with that. It's a great start. We've never had this before. I, I, I'm, this is this new training that, my team is interested in, which is like you're supposed to praise people four times before you give them a critique. I'm working on that.
Dr. Seuss?
Did a good job, did a good job.
All right, Dr. Seuss?
Oh, I'm not good at that. So yes, thank you. This is really helpful because now we know that there are four schools potentially that are, you know, have serious waiting lists and the other schools don't. And that's super helpful to know. And that's super helpful to know. When we last talked about this, we talked about sending it back to policies to be revised. Do we have a, a date for when, Mr. Schlichtman, for when we're going to be looking at this again?
No.
Last time I talked, you said you were right on it.
No, I mean, the thing is, is that we're, you know, uh, I, I think everybody, when we get down to the reports here of subcommittees, is we're going to find that we're all buried in town meetings.
I get it. I was just curious if, if there's...
No, uh, I mean, we'll, we'll look at it at some point when, when we feel, feel the need and Michael says, hey, let's, let's talk about this. Sounds like the discussion of where the policy is right now might merit that sooner than later.
Right. I mean, last, what I understood last time is that we felt that the policy was flawed, we wanted to pass it right away, and we wanted to look at, back at it fairly quickly.
I think, I think the process of getting the data and going through the first year of this, or at least the first part of this into September, will, will give us the baseline for doing an evaluation on, on what we're asking for and what we really want to see.
Okay. So I want to go on record in saying that I don't like the, the name of the policy. I think that there's an implication that the only barrier to expanding programs is surplus space, which is defined at the will of the principal, A, so it's very unclear, and B is maybe only one of many, many other barriers to expanding programs. So, so I think it's sort of misleading sometimes to get that kind of report. The final question I want to ask is just the timing for our next RFP. So how do, when do we have to get, um, you know, because we want to ask for slightly some differences, you know, incrementally sort of push to standardize things. When do we have to get that done by?
Are you referring to an RFP for the schools that are, the, the programs that are non-district sponsored?
Right, non-district sponsored, right. So we, we asked for certain things at our last one. I think there's some other small incremental steps that we could ask for in the second round, the next round.
Well, if we're issuing the current contracts, then that, the, the process of a RFP, uh, the question is of, is there a need at the moment if we're issuing the current year contracts? It would be when...
Because it's more than one year, the contract is more than one year.
Yeah, we would have to, no, they're not more than one year. They're not more than one year.
Okay. So then, yeah, so when...
The contracts that they're, because the programs have already started to gather the applications for the next, next year.
Right, sometime after the, the subsequent year.
Oh, you're talking about for, if you're talking about fiscal twenty-one?
Timing for the subsequent year, right.
Fiscal twenty-one.
Yes.
So typically, the, the, the process is about a month, right? So we would have to do a month rollout beforehand, but we probably want to do it a lot sooner. So I would say that, uh, we probably start looking at this in October.
October, okay. So October, we should definitely be meeting and, you know, suggesting things. Okay, cool. Thank you.
All right, my, my turn? Okay. So yes, the, the data is, is very valuable. Thank you for that. As other people had mentioned, you know, the, the part of the policy that says, what is the available space? The idea is, is, you know, both the classrooms that they're, the space that they're using and any other space that maybe they could use. Because my view is that these, you know, any, any waitlist that's over thirty or so is a problem. And that's a problem that the program and the building principal should be looking to solve. And so maybe, uh, the program says, you can give me space, but I can't hire people? That's information that we need to know. Or maybe, it, maybe the principal says, I, I just can't take these classrooms away from my teachers, they're going to, they're going to, you know, be very angry at me. And that's information we need to know. But, but I think there is a problem here that we need to have some attention directed to try to solving. And that's part of what we want in the report. And again, it doesn't have to be the letter of the report, but that's sort of what we're, that's the whole purpose of this exercise.
So on my updated report, I'll provide the spaces that are identified as surplus, surplus spaces that are available, um, that are not in use. And if I can find the information about what's in use by the programs, I will try to provide that as well. We, the, 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 the respond to the, the terms of, I know our internal program, I've had conversations with Todd Morse, he's had difficulties with hiring staff. And, you know, some of his programs, the waitlists are small, but then there are others that are somewhat moderate that can still serve a, a need. So I know that there is challenges in the current economic condition, like environment, you know, it's difficult to hire.
Okay.
Just one point I want to add is, you know, in, there's no restriction on you adding that in a narrative.
Okay.
Report that says, you know, here are the challenge, we've surveyed the, the leaders of the, the after-school programs, here are the challenges.
Okay.
Finding people because of Trump's immigration policies, not lining up, if you put that in there.
Yeah.
If you could.
Yeah.
End-guessing requirements.
Yeah, that's...
Mr. Hayner?
What is the definition of surplus?
Principal defined.
No, the, no, I'm, I'm very serious because I'm very concerned about this. I appreciate the issue of needing after-school programs for children. And it's, it's a daycare issue. But at the same time, as a former teacher, I've had people come in, abuse the space, and it, there is no way to appropriately clean the space if, if things are ending. You have staff coming in at six, seven, eight o'clock at night to do cleaning, which is going to cost more to the district for that. I, I appreciate the need, but at the same time, the, and, and, uh, Mr. Kaiden mentioned about people, teachers getting upset. I'm one of those teachers. We, we'd have after-school programs. There were some programs that were excellent, and they, they, the classroom never looked like anybody was in there. But that was the exception. And, and yes, public buildings are not utilized to the max. I appreciate that. It's a conundrum that we're in. But we need to be prepared that if we're going to maximize this space, there may be costs that may definitely offset going back and forth. We have to look at the whole picture. That's all I'm asking you to do. Thank you.
All right, anything else? Okay, thank you. Now the superintendent's report. So, Neil, thank you.
Yes, so I will be given the superintendent's report, Dr. Bodie's absence. So the first thing I want to highlight is something that actually happened today, and I think there's, she's coming back tomorrow. But we had a person who is a Holocaust survivor come and address or give a presentation, and her name was Mrs. Rena Fender. And it was just outstanding. And it gave a perspective from someone who actually lived through those, that awful period of history. And she gave the, and that personal view, I think, was really dynamic and gave, um, something that you just can't learn in a book, in a book or from a video. And, uh, so it was quite powerful, and I had an opportunity to go down and listen to part of her presentation. And I just want to thank, uh, Mr. Denny Cocklin, our director of social studies, who partnered with Facing History and ourselves in order to bring this very dynamic speaker and gave our students a unique experience, learning experience today. So that's one thing I want to highlight. Secondly, uh, you know, congratulations to the high school performing arts department, Sabato D'Agostino, Justin Moore, and Greg Kudakis, and student musicians for an excellent pop concert last weekend that brought the audience to its feet many times during the performance. I also would like to highlight that last week, we had our Japanese visitors. And they completed a very successful visit that included, um, a visit to Bracket, Odison, and the high school. The Japanese students performed musical performances, and they also did a dance performance. And at Odison, I was able to attend Bracket and Odison, but at Odison, they also presented on their culture, which included describing what their school life is like. And I thought that was very wonderful. In that congregation that came from Japan was the mayor of Naga...
Naga Okakio.
I've been practicing this, too.
It's hard, it's really hard.
And I said it, and that, we had dinner with them, and I was, I was great until now. Nago Kakio, right?
No, Naga Okakio.
Nago Kakio.
Naga Okakio.
Okay.
Naga Okakio.
Got you. So we had the mayor, and we had, um, some very distinguished guests from that particular city also come as part of the delegation. Uh, we had dinner, um, and it was just a wonderful experience. Again, uh, talking to individuals from a different culture and just, you know, telling them about our lives and learning about their lives, and it was just a, a great experience. And I'm, I'm sure that the students also, um, gained a lot from the visitors, the, the Japanese students that came and stayed with host families and had an opportunity to tour our schools and also our cities. So it was just a, it's just a wonderful program. And I, it's this thirty-fifth anniversary of this program. And so I learned a lot, um, from the dinner about how it got started and how we can definitely continue this, this, this wonderful learning experience. Um, I'd like to congratulate the students who performed in the Mary Poppins at Odison last weekend. The acting, singing, choreography, costumes, and staging were excellent. The play was delightful. I'd like to thank the teachers who gave collectively hundreds of hours to direct and support our students in this great learning and confidence-building experience. Gina Fernanda, Corey Smith, Randy Flynn, and Greg Kudak, Kandakis. And I understand Jeff, your son, was one of the leads.
He was.
He was fabulous.
Played the father, George Banks.
Yes.
Really good.
Okay, so we have a budding star on our hands, or...
As like Jennifer's son. Likes theater, thank you.
Uh, I would also like to congratulate Rachel Olivari, uh, the, the Arlington Public Schools Sustainability Coordinator, and to all of our school green teams for their recognition by the Massachusetts Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs at a ceremony at the State House that took place this past Monday for their work to promote environmental awareness and their work to reduce greenhouse emissions. Mrs. Olivari was also recognized for her work to develop a K-12 environmental literacy curricula. And last year, the APS was also recognized by the U.S. Department of Education for this work. So great job. That is something that I'm very proud of. Uh, we want to also acknowledge the students at Odison and at the high school, who as best buddies, supported Arlington Lab students in the annual Special Olympics held on May first in Lexington. Um, and it's always a, a wonderful event. So I would like to congratulate those individuals. Also, the SASS team, um, oh, I think that's it, is that it? Yeah, this, that's it.
Great, thank you. I wanted to welcome our, uh, visitors tonight. From the A A, we have, uh, Miriam Nolan. She's at K through five team chair and reading specialist at Bishop. And our student rep, again, is Victor Chilarev. Welcome back. He's a ninth grader at, uh, here at AHS. Thank you for attending. All right, consent agenda. All items listed with an asterisk are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion. There'll be no separate discussion of these items unless a member of the committee so requests, in which event the item will be considered in its normal sequence. Approval of warrant, warrant number one nine two one zero dated four twenty-five, two thousand nineteen. Total warrant amount, four eight one seven four eight dot eight nine. Approval of minutes, regular and organizational school committee minute, school committee minutes of April eleventh, two thousand nineteen, and April twenty-fifth, two thousand nineteen.
Hold the twenty-fifth, please.
Okay. Approval of trip, San Juan, Puerto Rico, July thirteenth through twentieth, two thousand nineteen, service learning, cultural exchange, sports mentoring trip for AHS students. Approval of AHS computer team trip to Wayne, New Jersey, May twenty-fourth to May twenty-sixth, two thousand nineteen.
Approve is presented.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Abstentions? Okay, unanimous? The four twenty-five minutes, Mr. Hayner?
I just want to abstain on that because I wasn't present.
Okay. Motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed? Abstentions?
One.
Mr. Hayner?
Mr. Hayner.
All right. Subcommittee and liaison reports and announcements. Let's go through the list, although I know we've, as Mr. Schlichtman said, been busy with town meeting. Budget?
Budget, the budget passed.
Yes, that's right.
So, and we appreciate Mr. Mason's amazing work there. It went very smoothly. Um, and other than that, nothing to report.
Great, community relations?
Uh, we have meeting on Monday.
Great. C I A A, Jane is not here. Facilities?
Nothing to report.
Policies and procedures?
No report.
Legal services?
Nothing to report.
Building committee?
Upcoming, we have a forum at Town Hall on, uh, May twenty-first from, starting at from seven PM to nine PM. And so we invite everybody in the community who has questions about the building, high school building project, to come to the forum. Uh, it's a chance for people to get the questions answered. We'll be repeating some of the presentation that we did on, at Town Meeting. And we are, are we going to have tours on the eighteenth of May?
We don't know the date yet.
We don't know yet.
Okay, so we don't know the date yet for tours, yeah.
So those are, those are what's coming up.
But there, there will be tours coming, and they'll be publicized on our, on the building committee website, as well as through announcements and stuff. So if people are interested in tours, they should just keep their eyes open and they'll see an announcement.
Great. Any liaison reports? Announcements? Mr. Hayner?
Sorry, no.
No, go ahead.
Ready for the next one.
Oh, announcements. Uh, so I have an announcement. I was just at the Touchdown Club Dinner. It's always a great event. I didn't realize that quite so many student athletes attended. There were over a hundred, um, student athletes, along with a very small group of Touchdown Club members. But it's a, it's a longstanding eighty-year-old club that's, that's always supporting our athletes and doing this wonderful awards dinner, so thank them for, for that. And future agenda items? Mr. Hayner?
Somewhere, and before the end of the year, to discuss chapter seventy money that's coming from the state.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anything else? All right. Executive session. To conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with union or non-union personnel or contract negotiation.
No, 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 no.
We don't have anything, yeah.
Okay.
Unfortunately.
Yeah.
We're still... Still talking.
Yeah.